Okay, it's seven o'clock and I'd like to call this Committee of the Hall meeting to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hersi.
Here.
Ms. Colacetti. Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry. Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Okay, and next on the agenda is approval of minutes of previous meeting. That's January 3rd, 2023 minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, sorry, are there any substantive corrections or anything? All right, now can we do all in favor again? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any additions to the agenda or changes? Yes, Mayor Marlin?
One removal of one item, and that would be during the closed session, please remove the closed session review of closed session minutes.
Okay. Do I move on with that, or do we have to do a motion?
No.
Move minutes. Public input and presentations. Let's start with public input. Is there anyone that wishes to address the City Council Committee of the Hall tonight? Are there any emails from anyone regarding tonight's meeting? Okay, moving on. Presentations. We have our UFD promotions tonight, which I never would have known. But anyway, come on up Chief Dave, do your thing.
Once again, thank you for allowing us to come and share this ceremony with you guys. We appreciate it. Over the last few months, you guys have seen us bring before you several of our promotions that have happened in the department. Tonight, we're not sharing any promotions, but we're going over a lot of our new hires that have happened in the last couple of years. So tonight, we're going to bring before you firefighters that were hired two years, or a year ago. Some of them were, two of the members tonight are part of our Safer Six that we hired through the grant. And we also have two brand-new members tonight. Today, we started three brand-new members on the Urbana Fire Department, and two of them are here tonight to be sworn in. And once again, like we've told you, you know, our promotional process is quite extensive. But when we hire new firefighters, they also come and they share an oath publicly that they show the intention to fulfill the obligations of their position. And so tonight, what we're going to do, since we have so many, I'm going to read off the names of the individuals. They're all going to come up front. We'll perform our oath together, and then we'll call out the members of their family who's going to come up and pin them. So let me get my helpers out. First up is Austin Schelmedine. Austin was hired January 4th, 2021. Austin Schelmedine has two years of service with the Urbana Fire Department, and firefighter Schelmedine is currently working to complete certifications to join our technical rescue team. And his grandfather, Russell Schelmedine, was an Urbana firefighter in the early 1970s. Next up, we have firefighter Jake Luffman. Jake was hired August 9th, 2021. Jake Luffman participated in UFD's internship program for two consecutive years while attending college. Firefighter Luffman is now a paramedic with over one year of experience with the Urbana Fire Department. Next, firefighter Drake Royal. Drake was hired November 8th, 2021. Drake Royal recently completed one year of service with the Urbana Fire Department and is currently enrolled in the Advanced Emergency Medical Technician Program. Next, firefighter Tara Stigers. Tara Stigers will complete one year of service with the Urbana Fire Department this week and is currently enrolled in the Advanced Emergency Medical Technician Program. Tara was one of our Safer Six hires. Next is Nathan Williams. Firefighter Nathan Williams. Nathan Williams will complete one year of service with the Urbana Fire Department this week and is currently enrolled in the Advanced Emergency Medical Technician Program. Next, firefighter Zachary Hinson. Zach was hired February 2nd, 2022. Zach Hinson will complete one year of service with the Urbana Fire Department this week and is currently enrolled in the Advanced Emergency Medical Technician Program. Zach is also one of our Safer Six hires. The next two are two newest members of the Urbana Fire Department. They started their career today. So firefighter Zachary Brooks. Zachary Brooks is a new member of the Urbana Fire Department. Firefighter Brooks started his career today and will be attending the nine-week Spring Firefighter Academy at the Illinois Fire Service Institute starting next week. And next up is firefighter Richard Hersberger. Richard Hersberger is a new member of the Urbana Fire Department, and firefighter Hersberger is a paramedic and is transferring from the Mattoon Fire Department. It's time they'll go ahead and read their oaths.
So you have a copy of your oath, and when it gets to the point of stating individual names, we'll take time out for each of you to state your name individually, and then together, you'll read the remainder of the oath. So if you raise your right hand and state after me. Aye.
Aye.
Richard Hersberger.
Zachary Brooks.
Zachary Hinson.
Nate Williams.
Tara Stigers.
Drake Royal.
Jake Luffman.
Austin Schelmedine.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of firefighter.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of firefighter.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
For the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign, Illinois.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The state of Illinois and the charters and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
The state of Illinois and the charter and ordinances of the city of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Coming up to pin Austin Schelmedine is his wife, Katie. Coming to pin firefighter Jake Luffman is his mother, Melissa. Coming up to pin firefighter Drake Royal is his father, Ty. Coming up to pin firefighter Tara Stigers is her daughter, Kinley. Coming up to pin firefighter Nathan Williams is his wife, Lindsay. Coming up to pin firefighter Zachary Hinson is his wife, Abby. Coming up to pin firefighter Zachary Brooks is his wife, Shelby. For firefighter Richard Hersberger, his family couldn't make it tonight. They do love him, but they couldn't attend, so Deputy Chief Kyle Hinch will pin him, and we'll see if he loves him enough to give him a kiss. With that, that concludes tonight for us doing our pinning ceremony. We appreciate the time, and they're going to be signing their oaths over there, so we'll get out of your way, and we'll probably be outside taking some pictures. Once again, council, we thank you.
Thank you.
So please step over to the city clerk's desk to sign the oaths.
Good day, Eddie. Go, go.
There's the last. Oh, you're going to take them out there? Okay.
Okay, moving on. We will be moving now into a closed session regarding property acquisition pursuant to ILCS 120 slash 2C5. Do I have a motion to move into closed session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mary Alice and Chandra. What's to say? Roll call.
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Hersi.
Yes.
Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
Then let's move on to closed session? Okay, do I have a motion for us to come out of closed session?
So moved.
Thank you, Mary Alice. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Chandra. Next is a staff report. Do we have any staff reports?
We have to roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Moving on, aren't I? All in favor? Oh, roll call.
It has to be roll call.
Sorry, roll call.
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Hersi.
Yes.
Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Next is a staff report, and we don't have any staff reports? Okay. New business. Our new business tonight is ordinance number 2023-02005, an ordinance vacating an alley, alley north of Main Street, east of Lynn Street, and Tim is coming forward to give us information regarding that.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, Tim Cowan.
Yeah, so this vacation, it's one of multiple unmaintained alleys that we operate within the city of Urbana where they were at one point or another, whether it's via subdivision or creation for other purposes, have not been utilized or recognized in value. There's a number of encroachments across this alley. We, there's not a maintained paved surface there, anything that is providing primary access or anything for any of the adjacent property owners. We've approached and reached out to all of the five property owners. There's six properties. One property owner owns two properties to talk about this. Four of the five have returned, and the one that owns the two properties has been non-responsive for the past month or two now. That property generally stands to benefit out of this, as they're probably one of the primary encroachers across the alley. They own both the north and south parcels across the alley and have built a fence and some other things across the alley. We ran into an issue where we had a tree that grew in our alley that was ours to maintain that caused some issues that we had some liability in going and removing, and it caused some damages and things like that. We worked it out with the adjacent property owner, got it removed, and they were on board for us to vacate this alley. That was the animal hospital there at 908 East Main. That work has all since been completed. The tree's been removed, hazards mitigated, and at this time, we would propose vacating this alley to the adjacent property owners to take it off of our books. There will be a utility easement maintained. Currently, there's still overhead electric that runs through there that serves these properties, so in the event that someone had to get back there to maintain the electrical services, there is a utility easement that would be maintained through here, but it would give them a right to use the alley as they see fit, which they're kind of doing already.
Does anyone have any questions for Tim? Mary Alice?
I should know this because there was an alley vacated on my property a little while ago, but what does it do to the property tax for the people?
Well, it could slightly increase just because their area increases, but I would guess that that's going to be nominal, if anything, because the land value tied to the parcels is the smaller portion of it.
So if we agree to vacate it, does it go to the county recorder, which is now merged with the, and then that's how it is recorded, basically?
Yep, yep. That would all be recorded, so on file, these parcels would essentially become whole again.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Tim? Grace?
So is that separate than the recommendation of no payment from the properties in lieu of the fees, right? You're talking about just purchase payment versus property tax payment. Is that right?
Correct. The purchase payment would be, sometimes a vacation comes to us where a landowner has requested it of us, where it may or may not be in our best interest, but if it's in their best interest and it's for gain for them. Residential, the way the policy reads is residential properties are not necessarily obligated to do that. Commercial properties are supposed to do that because there's potential commercial gain there unless we waive that. There is a single commercial property that's adjacent to this that we feel like the relief of maintenance, which would be a public cost ensued for public works and things of that nature, is benefit enough than asking that adjacent property owner to vacate this alley to us or from us.
Okay, so we're vacating, and they're not paying anything for that initial little addition on their property, but you're saying subsequent property tax calculations that will be factored in?
It could be impactful, but it's likely to a degree that's insubstantial.
Okay, and you said then there's still this utility easement, so if there needs to be work done in there, does that operate kind of like a right-of-way, or you just have to keep it open?
I mean, in theory, yeah. The idea is that the utility company would have a right to get in there to maintain their facilities as needed. There are encroachments there, you know, all of the property owners have been notified, you know, this vacation, essentially, it's relieving the city of having obligations within this area, but not utility companies having the right to come back in there and work on their stuff. So a good example of when we have encroachments would be backyard sewers. In emergency events, if we have a blockage in the middle of the night, we would cut through those fences and get to the blockage to relieve it if necessary. Typically, electrical companies, if they have maintenance-type stuff, they're going to work around that or work with the adjacent property owners to get through there, but their main pathway will be off of Lynn Street if necessary.
Thank you.
Anyone else with questions? Can I get a motion? Oh, sorry, Mary Alice.
No, I was going to make a motion.
Okay.
I don't know if it makes sense to put it on the consent agenda, but what the hey. All right, I'm going to move ordinance number 2023-02005, an ordinance vacating the alley, the alley north of Main Street, east of Lynn Street, on the consent agenda for approval to City Council.
Can I get a second?
A second, sorry.
Okay. Can I get a roll call, please? I mean, discussion? Any discussion, further discussion? Then may I get a roll call?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Hersi.
Yes.
Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Cowan?
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda for new business, resolution number 2023-02-013R, resolution adopting the City of Urbana American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, concept plan project list, and we have Will coming to inform us of what we need to do.
Okay, thank you. So before the City Council tonight is a resolution adopting the ARPA Concept Plan Project List, and this project list includes 25 projects and prospectively allocates $9,949,343 of the city's remaining ARPA funds. The project list represents the conclusion of a months-long review process. After the city adopted its concept plan and its eight funding goals on September 12th, the city solicited for applications for projects, and at the close of the application period, there were 46 applications requesting nearly $40 million of funds. And the first step of the review process was a technical review, and that was completed by city and RPC staff, which scored the applications as submitted against the evaluation criteria set forth in the concept plan. Applicants then gave presentations on their projects to the mayor and city council on the evenings of December 12th, 13th, 14th, and 15th, and then the city council discussed applications, the presentations, subsequent submittals, and how to best allocate the funds in six meetings on December 19th, January 9th, January 17th, 24th, February 6th, and February 16th. And then, since the discussions are all recorded and available, I'm not going to repeat them verbatim, but just to summarize, the mayor and city council first discussed which projects kind of best merited the ARPA funds, and then from that list, worked towards allocating how much money to spend for each project. The city started that process from a top-down approach, starting with the projects that there was the most consensus with, and then going down, simply just ran out of money before we got to the end of the list. There were a wide variety of organizations supported in this list, including multiple city projects, other governmental agencies, as well as longstanding and established nonprofits, sorry. And then each and every one of the concept plan goals were addressed in some way. There's a table in the memo that shows the distribution of funds by concept plan goal, and the specific numbers are a little bit arbitrary because we counted them twice, but you can see that, you know, as the mayor said in the paper, she's, the city's making an intentional investment in health, and this includes millions of dollars in affordable mental health, lasting investments in physical health, housing and food security, and so that at the end of the performance period, with the city's ARPA funds, the city will have facilitated a substantial investment in long-lasting, community-oriented infrastructure, which includes a new health and wellness facility for the Park District, a new alternative education center for some of the most vulnerable students in the community, a new hazardous waste facility, a new pilot sewer improvement program in the Dr. Ellis Neighbor, Dr. Ellis Neighbor, sorry, Dr. Ellis subdivision. Seven projects that try to tackle some of the root causes of community violence, many of which directly engage the youth of the community, focusing from mental health to building houses, increased availability of food, availability of food from the farm and then delivered to the table, and then nine projects and over $4 million of funding committed across the affordable housing spectrum from homeless housing, shelter support, services, assistance, and affordable housing projects. So by passing the resolution attached tonight, city council will begin, will enable staff to begin working to write contracts with the ARPA fund sub recipients, and then we'll bring those contracts to council. So without anything else, that's all I have.
Does anyone have questions for Will? Mary Alice?
I always had at least one question. So my question is, will city council be informed on some kind of cadence in terms of the progress? So for example, it would be great to know perhaps annually which projects have begun, which projects are undergoing. I know that things change, and so I think it would just help us kind of keep an eye on things?
Yeah, so all projects will be required to have, submit a quarterly report, so we'll have some information every quarter, how easy that is to make it packaged and look nice, but we can certainly report at steady increments.
Thank you.
Any other, Grace, did you have a question?
Oh, Chris?
Not that it has any impact on tonight, but I noticed there was $110,000 left over that we didn't spend. Any ideas at this time how we are going to deal with that?
There's no formal plans for the remaining funds. I think the discussion last week kind of talked about the benefits of preserving a little bit in case the administrative costs are a little bit higher than expected. I think the initial thought wasn't for 25 projects, so it kind of depends on how reporting goes and how easy that is. So there might be some of that expense above and beyond what we thought, but there's no official plan for it at this time.
Grace?
Thanks. That was also my question, and to clarify, it's about $50,000 remaining. Is that right?
We had, during the process, we had talked about $10 million, and so out of that $10 million, there's about $50,000 remaining, you're right. And then of the city's overall allocation, there was $12,970,000 and change. So when we had been talking about $10 million, it was actually $10 million and change, so that's how we get the $100,000 remaining.
Okay. Any other questions? Can I get a motion?
I will move. Find the agenda here. I will move resolution number 2023-02013R, resolution adopting the Urbana, City of Urbana American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, Concept Plan Project List to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion regarding this? Mary Alice?
I know we've said it practically at every meeting, but I don't think we can understate the level of appreciation we have for staff, for RPC, for all the people who applied to the funds. I know that it was a long process, and I know that city council spent a long time, but I, it's unheard of the number of hours I know that staff has spent, so thank you very much.
Grace?
Thank you. I definitely agree with the appreciation in this process, and great to see all of the community applications that we got. It's been an interesting journey, and I appreciate the staff and council and mayor in all of these discussions and coming to a respectful majority decision. There's still some that, you know, I would have liked to have given a chance, distribute a little differently, and I think that's just part of the process of working together with everyone's input. I hope that we can have that list of other potential funding sources to give out to applicants, whether they did or did not get funding, about other potential options, places they could apply that still have funding that we know of. And I also don't know if there's any openness to some creative kind of partnerships. I think a lot of them didn't have support where it would apply, but ones, for example, that there was two applicants with rental assistance for immigrant families and households, and one was selected and one was not, and I don't know if there was, you know, is it kind of they can ask, they can, you know, recommend people to the other organization, or is there a chance for, I think there had been some initial kind of ideas on like a shared pot of money for that purpose that other organizations could do, or just kind of what's the plan on that kind of process?
I can speak to the first one. So in the, we sent a letter out to all the folks who didn't get the ARPA funds, and then in that letter, we sent, there's a list of different funds that are still available, both city funds, as well as to some locations for more information about other state, local, federal funds. So we did send that out to the applicants, but we didn't send that So we did send that out to the applicants, but we didn't send that to the council members to share. So I can forward you that if you'd like. And as far as the second point, I can't quite answer that one. I don't think there's any official plans to, I mean, we'd love for folks to work together, but I don't think the city has plans to, at this time, to facilitate any of that necessarily.
Mary Marley?
Well, I wouldn't go quite that far. I would, I would challenge the recipients of these 25 grants to, to, to think about how they can leverage these funds and work together. And I had a great example of that just from Thursday night. I was at an event and one of the organizations who are recipients of funds, one of the representatives from that organization came up to me and they were very excited. And they were already thinking about ways they could work in concert with some of the other projects that, that were receiving ARPA funds as well. So, so while this is a one-time investment of federal dollars in local projects, I see these as having a long-term impact on our community. And the more that sub recipients work together, the bigger input, impact they can have. So there's just tremendous opportunity for collaboration starting now with these projects as they get underway. So I would challenge, I would challenge the sub recipients to think about ways they can work together to, to really leverage these funds. I also want to acknowledge Will Kolchowski, J.D. McClanahan, Ashley McLaughlin, Carol Mitten, city staff, city council, and all the applicants as well as members of the public who over the years have provided input to the city that you helped, all, all of you helped us identify priorities and establish the need and identify the gaps and where we could best use these funds. So this process has been long, but it's been very thoughtful, intentional. And frankly, we are, we are right on time. We have until December of 2026 to commit the funds. That means have signed contracts and, or December of 2024 and December of 2026 to spend the funds. So once the contracts are signed, the work can begin. And I just want to say thank you to all who have participated. We can, I think we can all be very proud of this process. And I can't wait to see what, what is going to come of this. And, and I can't tell you how many times I've heard people say, well, there's no, especially for youth in our community, there's nowhere to go and there's nothing to do. Well, as a result of this investment, there will be places to go and lots of things to do. And for, of that, we can all be very proud.
Anyone else care to? Okay, so we have a motion on the table. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Is that on the consent?
Um, I don't think she put it on the consent, it's just regular. Okay, and so that has passed. Communication, council input and communications, anybody? Mary Alice?
Um, I just, I want to thank the fire department for continuing to support and hire excellent people. Very excited to hear the number of people who are interested in medical services, considering that we have almost 50% of our calls for service to be medical. So it's very inspiring to hear that. And I want to thank the families. There were a lot of family members that didn't come up to pin, but were there. And so I appreciate them coming out to support. Thank you.
Anyone else for council input? Okay, then having nothing else before the committee of the hall, our meeting is adjourned.